Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for July 18th, 2017. First item, salute the flag. Elise is not here tonight, she's on vacation, so...
I forgot my packet, joys of life together.
Uh-huh.
Tell me how your weekend was, eh?
I'll wait for Jen to come back before we move on. She'll be right back with us. Just talk amongst yourselves, we'll be fine here. Thank you, Roland.
No problem.
I hate dead air time, so I don't know any good jokes, so we can't do that, so... Here she comes, you don't want that either, no sing-alongs. Okay, that's not a problem. Approval of the agenda. Do I hear an approval of the agenda?
Approval of the agenda.
There we go. I'll second it. All in favor? All opposed? I haven't seen the minutes of the last meeting.
No, you have not.
Okay, so we will table the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Department heads committee chair updates. Do we have any tonight? Okay. Old business, MMA action plan.
So, kinds of good things happening with this. First and foremost, we got a structural engineer to come and evaluate the building at the fitness center, which was one of the few things that we had left to do.
Great.
So I'm gonna be emailing you a letter from him that you're gonna see that he doesn't feel like there's anything structural, structurally wrong with it, I mean, there are some minor things that he'd like to see done to it, but feels like it's safe and withstanding, so he's gonna send you a letter that we can send to MMA to hopefully get that off the list. There's two of them, I just, I'm not sure how to address still, so we have the kitchen vent hood and the stove pilot light. I mean, short of replacing that stove, I don't know how we're gonna get past these two, so I'm looking for some direction from you as to what you want me to do with.
That's about the only way we're gonna get by that, I mean, the stove is, I don't know how old the stove is, but, I mean, standing pilot lights are, I think, a thing of the past.
Develop a CIP to install a ventilation system to remove heat and combustible food vapors from the building per National Fire Protection Code 96. And then contact a qualified technician to repair the propane stove pilot light ignition system so employees are not exposed to possible hazard, because it has to be lit.
Right, right.
So, I mean, do we, you know, I wanna say, take it out of use, but I don't...
How much does it actually get used? I know the Lions Club uses it for the pancake breakfast.
Lions Club uses it, the Democrats slash Republicans have suppers occasionally, I mean, you know.
Has somebody looked at the pilot light yet? Do you just feel like, it's just too old?
No, I haven't, I mean, we've, I mean, we've had someone come and reset it and constantly...
Yeah, I think it's more the fact that it has pilot lights.
Right.
Versus the electric stat on the ignition on the new ones.
And if we had that repaired, there's no venting system, that's the other piece, that there's no ventilation.
Right.
But let's just say you put a new stove in there, how would, it would just, that'd be part of the installation, they would vent it?
No.
No.
It's two separate, two separate items, the stove is a cheap part, the venting is not gonna be all that cheap.
Right.
And from what I have seen, if you, depending on what they put in for a vent, or what it needs to be for a vent, I don't know if we can call this a commercial kitchen or not. That would bring a whole nother set of...
Rules.
Rules and regulations in, and the volume of the vent.
Right, and he, I mean, he does quote the National Fire Protection Code, I mean, I guess I can talk to Ken, see what it, you know...
That's what I was gonna recommend, yeah.
See what it takes, and then just ask them straight out how much time we have, I mean, it's not something we've budgeted for, so...
Right.
If we get to the point like the Santa Sal building, that they tell us we have to stop using it, then...
We have to stop using it, yeah. Stove-wise, I mean, you're probably talking five to $700 for a decent...
Because it doesn't have to be that big of a commercial...
I don't think it has to be that big, I mean, that would be a decent, you know, a large residential stove.
Right.
I mean, we don't need to be putting in one of those big Wolf commercial...
It's not used that much.
No, so stove-wise, I think that would be, you know, that's a, that's a relatively inexpensive fix.
Okay, so maybe I'll...
But the vent, we gotta find out from the vent what that's gonna entail. I mean, you see restaurants, they have those big vents that, you know, they're big, big things that run a lot of air out through.
So who installs those kind of things?
Call Central Furniture, maybe.
Yes.
They might install their loads.
Yeah, that's who I was thinking of for the stove. Yeah. Yep. I know the fire department actually has a commercial vent over theirs. Bill Catanze might have an idea.
Okay, I'll look into it a little more.
Yep. Okay, all set on that one? Nothing else on the action plans?
That's it.
Okay.
Almost done.
Good. Mary Grant policy?
Nothing new, have not heard back from them.
Okay. Can we brought them along, 'cause I'm sure they're gonna be having events pretty soon here, because it's in their ballpark right now, correct?
It's in their ballpark, they, I'm trying to think which selectman was present, must have been Elise. Talked to Ms. Achilles, and they know it's in, they're trying to figure out what the best way to handle the whole checking of the property and returning the key slash money. So they're trying to figure out something amongst their committee that will work, because essentially if you want people to come in and leave a deposit here and you want us to give it back to them, I'm not gonna release it, you know, it's different with this hall, I can just come in the other room and look and see if they've cleaned it.
Somebody's gotta give you the okay.
Somebody's gotta be giving me the okay, I don't, you know, we don't have, we're not gonna go over there.
Yep.
All right?
Okay. Nope. Okay. Road Committee ad hoc bridges.
Okay, so, this is kinda old business, but the, I know that the road committee ad hoc had a meeting, I don't know if we wanted to table this, because Elise isn't here to give the update. You know, the bridges has been an ongoing conversation, the conversation that we had with Cindy was present during our hour, I've left numerous messages with different people, I'm gonna be nothing but honest with you, that the road commissioners feel like this is our, their responsibility, that we are really overstepping our boundaries, and we shouldn't even be making calls to these people, so in an effort to not get in the middle of that, you know, they, I really feel like the board needs to bring them in, bring this road ad hoc, because, and I'm not gonna, you know, but I've got one person telling me, you know, whether it be the selectmen, or, or somebody saying, you know, we need to call these people, we need to get these reports, we need to do this, I've got a road commissioner on the other side saying, "No, no you don't, that's not your business, I have the inspection reports," is what I'm being told. So, I don't know how the board wants to handle it, but I need you to step in and figure something out.
Okay.
Definitely need to get together, I think.
Yeah.
You know, have them come in and...
Elise gets back, let's set up a meeting with...
She'll be back on Thursday, do you want me to ask them to come to the next Selectmen's meeting?
Why don't we do that? Sure.
And ask the road committee to be here as well, or...
You know, ask if they, you know, feel that they've done their job, they should have the reports, and, you know, let your staff in and...
Have either one of you heard from a road commissioner that the bridges fall under their responsibility?
I have not.
I have, but, you know...
And I don't, again, I don't know the...
Yeah, I mean, in my, assuming...
No, I know, and I'm not saying, again, I'm not, you know, but that's...
I mean, assuming, I would think that they, they would, I mean, it's all part of the infrastructure of the Town of Acton. You know, you don't break it up and say, "Well, okay, you're in charge of the roads, but not the bridges and not the ditches," to me, it's all the same.
I mean, I would think that they should be responsible for them.
Right, and that's where...
And take care of them and do what they're supposed to.
So obviously, they see the meetings, they see what's being filmed, what discussions we've had over the last few weeks, and, you know, they, I mean, were very clear with me today that it's not, you know what I mean? I shouldn't be calling, the board should not be calling, you know, this is something, and they're in communications with them and are handling it, so I know that, that doesn't, everybody doesn't agree with that, so I don't, you know, I don't know which one to do.
Right. Come right up to the mic.
I brought in some material that, Cindy Hart Abbott Road, I brought in some material this week from the DOT that shows how to do basic maintenance on the bridge, bridges, and I haven't seen that that's been done on these bridges, therefore, the inspection's gonna be a lot harder. And so we talked, and I called Linda to see if we could get the AWAC kids down there. What needs to happen is at least weed whacking, and so that someone can physically get down there, and trees have even grown up around them, so if the road commissioners take care of these bridges, wonderful, but I haven't seen any, you know, sign of it so far.
That's something we should talk about.
Well, they should have the checklist, a copy of that checklist that I gave you, that's what's required on an annual basis for these bridges. And, and where we're dealing with Milton with the Hopper Road Bridge, they put asphalt over the concrete deck, and the asphalt then eats into the, underneath, into the deck and destroys it even more. We got down as close as we could, Brendan and I yesterday to look underneath, the scouring is substantial. The last rating I saw on the Hopper Road Bridge was a 30, when you're under 50, you have to consider replacement, it can't be repaired, and...
So is it just, I'm sorry, is it just this year that they haven't been maintained with this list?
There's been no maintenance on those bridges that I have seen at all. And on the, and for the Canal Bridge, no, we, I would really like Linda to do that one, because we worked quite hard to get it designated a historic monument, and it's got to be careful, it's gotta be carefully touched. New Hampshire has the plan for that, I believe I gave you a copy of that plan also, so you know, our only responsibility is on the main side, but we do have to have a 24-foot wide approach to it from the main side, 50-foot long, and we traditionally don't do our roads that wide. So whatever happens with the bridges, I'd be delighted if the road commissioners took an interest. But it needs to be handled, and it needs to get on our list for money right away, we can't afford, that's, you're six figures, way more than six figures on the Hopper Road. And on the road committee, I'm sure we would help as much as we can.
Thank you.
So you're gonna ask the road commissioners to discuss the bridges next week?
Yeah, sounds good, that way Elise will be here too, and she's, yep.
So, I mean, it sounds like the road committee may agree that it's their responsibility, so it may not be as much of a discussion.
Yeah. Okay, all set with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Maintenance ordinance for eight Loop Road.
That's on you, you met with the planning board chair?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I did. Yep, I met with them last Thursday, or the chairman anyway, and the CEO. Planning board is interested, or believe they'll be interested in putting together some sort of an ordinance. We've ordered a manual that was...
Property maintenance book?
Property maintenance manual. Yep, code for the town. Something the town's gonna have to adopt either in whole or in part. Once again, it's not a, it's not a quick and easy fix, but we do have some things in the ordinances already, and between that and some of the state rulings, that will take care of some of the issues we have going right now. And I believe the eight Loop Road, that's where the vehicles are? Is that the one?
The eight Loop Road, well, that one should be resolved.
Yes, it's starting to resolve, with a lot of hard work, but it's, yeah, that's starting to...
I mean, there were other properties, and it keeps, you know, and I hate to say this, keeps falling back to the code enforcement, you know, we either need to increase that deputy line, or, you know, ask the townspeople to do A, B, or C, but he's saying that, you know?
Yes.
He's 35 hours a week, he's working close to 50, just to keep up with the waterfront
Yep.
violations, and the tree cutting, and the, you know, the, I mean, well, his plate is overflowing, and when it comes down to priority, you know, unfortunately, not anything in his mind, it's just not a priority, you know what I mean, that junk compared to trees falling in the, you know, in the lakes, or whatever people might be doing, so...
Yeah, illegal building and all that sort, yeah. I mean, when we met with him, he did, he brought a stack of folders probably that high of violations that he's trying to get to.
Right.
And doesn't have great hopes of getting to the bottom of it anytime soon, so he will get there, but it's, like you say, it's all priority.
So the board's gonna have to decide if that's good enough, or if we wanna figure out a way to get some money moved to a deputy line and get him some assistance.
Yeah, I think that is gonna be the case. Sir?
As far as maintenance ordinances on people's property and everything, you know, if he doesn't have time in the summer to do this, by the time he gets around to do it, there's gonna be three feet of snow on the ground. We talked to him over two years ago, another person and I, and nothing has been done, and it's getting sickening, and it's about time something gets done, period.
You talking one piece of property in particular, or...
I'm talking, I'll, I'll take...
Yeah, what are you talking about?
All of you people around on a short trip and show you some of the places that are just horrendous. Anytime you wanna go, I will take you around, and there are, just in the roads that I travel, there's probably about eight, eight or nine.
When you say horrendous, elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, what are you, what are you seeing?
Come with me for a ride.
No, tell us, what are you seeing?
Yeah.
What have I seen?
Yeah.
People that have got chicken coops in front of their house, trailers in front of their house with, that have got turkeys, raising turkeys. I mean, covers out by the road, just red covers, thrown on the ground. Junk left in the yards, that are just, it's ridiculous, you know, a thousand pallets, you can't even see the person's grass. Come for a ride with me. It's my vehicle, my wear and tear, my gas, I'll take you anytime you wanna go. It's getting ridiculous, I'll, you know, you want me to start throwing rubbish down the roads, instead of going to the dump? 'Cause that's just what these people are doing, basically.
I mean, we'll, maybe at some point I will contact you and we'll take a ride, but, I mean, we can't tell people what to do with their own properties to a point, so it's that, it's that point.
You can make some laws, you can get some ordinances, so something gets done.
And that's what we're, that's what we're working on doing.
And maybe sometime, when is that sometime gonna be? When there's three feet of snow on the ground?
Ordinances take time.
And everything's covered up?
The town has to vote on it, the town might even vote it down, you never know.
That's right, they might.
Yeah, I hope they don't, because a lot of hard, a lot of hard work goes into these things.
But we gotta be proactive on this, and it's already, it's too late for that, now it's being reactive.
Keep in mind, if we come to the town to try to put some more money forward for an assistant to the code office, that would certainly help things, so, like I say, keep that in mind, and hopefully the town will be proactive on that. One person can only do so much. But we've got this, we've got this ordinance book coming, we'll take a look at that, the planning board has agreed to look it over and try to put together a plan for it, come up with an ordinance, so...
So when will this be?
Soon as we get the book, and as soon as they have time to put it, put it together. It's gonna be a couple of months, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. So, there may even be a committee put together, maybe you might wanna be on the committee.
Yeah, 'cause this is, this town is starting to look like hell. Period, period.
Thank you. So I guess as soon as we get that, we've agreed to get that to the planning board, they've been receptive, and we'll move forward with it best we can.
Okay.
So, thank you. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay, secret ballot voting? We don't have anything else on that right now.
Yeah, there's nothing else, I guess I'm just, you know, am I leaving it on there? You gonna continue to discuss it, what is the board's thought?
You can take, I would think you could take that off for now, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's nothing that can happen until you come to a town meeting for it, so... Deputy Carr? Oh, go right ahead, sorry about that.
No, I never fully understood what, what that was all about, it's for the secret ballot for any issue that comes up at the town hall.
From what I understood, my direction from the board was that they were contemplating, contemplating switching the type of government, similar to how Lebanon does it, if you check with Lebanon, so Lebanon votes, does not have an annual town meeting where we go to the school, every single article that you saw in that warrant is on a secret ballot, so when their polls are open from eight to eight, that's everything, so after the town meeting, when the turnout was so low, and there was concerns that, you know, certain things weren't advertised or published enough in the beginning, the board asked me to look into what it would take to switch over to doing everything by secret ballot, so I got them the information, and I guess they're choosing to...
So in essence, what you're doing is doing away with the town meeting?
That's what the original email was, but what they're telling me to do is to take it off the agenda, they're not gonna move forward with it at this time.
Okay.
I mean, so...
That's what I'm hearing.
Wanted to find out about, we just wanted to get some information about it, because we were talking about...
Okay, so, so you just put the question up?
Yes, that was all.
To get the information?
Yeah, we just wanted the information.
We can't change anything without town approval, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Now, it's coming off the agenda, and it probably will be brought up again for a while.
Yeah, it was just in the talking phase, and to see, 'cause two years running, probably more than that, the turnout has been 40 people and under, that are actual town voters that wanted to be there.
Yeah.
Where...
More that come in here to vote.
Right.
Voting time, how much was it?
287 people, I believe, this year, came in, you know, and the thing with that, there was one thing on there to do with the state of Maine, other than that, it was all town...
Right.
Town vote, so that's a really good, I think, a really good channel to use, or a good, a good marker, because people are coming for the Town of Acton, they weren't voting on a governor, they weren't voting on legislatures, they weren't voting on a president, they were voting for something for the Town of Acton.
Right.
So 287 people wanted to come in here and vote, as opposed to 35 or 40 down at the school.
Right.
The flip side of, the flip side of that too, is that, and it's hard to kinda think about the positives sometimes, but, you know, in many of the training classes I've gone to, they, they often say, if you only have 40 people at a town meeting, you know, that says something about the selectmen as well, because in a sense, it's posted around town, it's posted on the website, you know, you can say, you know, they could have gone, you know, they could have gone through the whole warrant and said, you know, 'cause you know the numbers can't be increased, and thought, you know, "I'm okay with everything the way that it is," you know, so sometimes not going is a form of support too, so you have to, you know, kinda look at it both ways.
Yep, yep, I'm just looking to get as many people involved, or as many, as many voices, I guess.
Now, just, just to ask the question, what, what do you think it was about that, the 200 and whatever they are, what got them here?
I think convenience is a lot of it, you've got a 12-hour period...
Right, now that was just for the selectmen?
Yes, that's what brought them out.
Selectmen, school board.
School board, right.
Yeah, yeah, in that one state.
That was way heavily more advertised than the town meeting.
I think they were both advertised hand in hand.
The election was?
Yes.
They should have been together, because the election is the, oh, yeah, but those aren't something that the towns put up.
Well, that's, yeah, that's not us, that's...
We don't put those up, though, the candidates.
No, no.
No, but you know, actually, he's right, though, Shapley, Shapley puts out, sorry, not to interrupt you, Shapley puts out town meeting signs, they say town meeting this Saturday, and then they just put them out, you know?
Yeah.
They advertise them around town.
The thing was, is that the, you know, the issue of, of that, of the town, of the selectmen, electing the selectmen, is no more important than all of the articles on the...
Yeah. I weigh the articles maybe heavier.
I would think the articles would be even more important to people.
I'd weigh the articles heavier.
Right.
You're making decisions about what's gonna happen with your taxes and stuff.
And I think it was the advertisement, if, if we got out and advertised the town meeting a little more, and drummed, you know, I just, I'm just saying. But anyway, thank you.
You're gonna have a marketing department here before you're done.
She's planning on it.
It's okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I'm not looking to take anything away, I'm, you know, from people, I wanna, I wanna get more people involved, you know, and try to... Yeah.
Bringing up the question and getting the information, it's healthy.
Yep, yep, thank you. Okay, Deputy Carr, any further on that from last week?
Nope, they awarded the bids, so I understand they're now placing the order.
Beautiful, beautiful. Recycle bins?
I ordered 50 per our last meeting, so they are going to be for sale effective on Thursday, they're being delivered tomorrow, so...
Nice. Good.
Are we recycling, other than what we do with the dump?
Well, it's, so you can put your recycling stuff in that bin, you know, like, yeah, you take it home, yes. We got big, big trash cans.
Yeah, we mentioned last week, I think it was because when Elise originally started separating the stuff over there, she just kinda mentioned, you know, can we look for containers, so we only ordered 50, I think that we'll be able to sell them, see if they were a hit or not, but it should make it easier to carry the stuff, you know, they're stackable, blah, blah, blah.
Post it on WhatsApp, at...
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
I try to put our postings up there, I just put animal control up there, I put the other two up there.
Eagle Road runoff?
I'm hoping that this also comes off, so at the last meeting, what I heard you tell me was, or heard Elise tell me, was to reach out to the individual and see if he was happy with the, with him and Bud and Scott had gotten together, I left him a very detailed message, didn't hear him back, so I'm thinking he must be happy, and it can come off.
Okay, yeah, I would think so.
Is that okay with you?
It's fine with me. Let's see, reserve accounts?
Tabled until the audit is done.
Okay, yep. And hopefully we'll get the auditor in, and get the warrant finance committee together, and they can get their explanations. Bridges, we kinda covered that under the...
Yeah, that's a duplicate, sorry.
Yep, under the other one. Personnel policy?
Hopefully we'll, we, I sent you an email with the blurb that we talked about changing, but I'd have to wait till next week if possible for the...
Yep.
Chair to return, so we'll just table that.
Yep. Newbridge Road, public access.
Yes. So I got an email from, so this is the piece of property that we were not certain who owned it?
Yes.
So Lenkowski researched it at the Registry of Deeds, and essentially what he says is that he can find that, that the Horns across the street, who owned it, who used to own it, where it went, he's not, he can't tell exactly based on the plan of who owns it now, but what he can tell, and he is certain, is that the Town of Acton does not. There's no record of any type of deed, I mean, so essentially, when you have a large piece of property, and she broke it off into little pieces, somehow this little chunk got left out, it does talk in the deed about reserved for public use, it looks like it might have gotten moved across the, across the years, 'cause this goes way, way back, but, and he's willing to put more time into it, but remember, his time is your money. But at the same time, he said, you know, unless you really wanna know who owns it, what I can tell you is that the town certainly doesn't, and he doesn't think you have any authorization to block it off.
How big of a piece of property is it?
It was tiny, it was just, like a triangle piece.
Tiny as in 20 by 20, or 50 by 50?
I have to show it to you on the map.
Okay.
It's right on the, do you know where the, is it Newbridge? What, like, was it, was it, um, Newbridge Road? Yes, it's a whole tree line.
There's a tree line, maybe you can kinda pull in, people...
Okay.
There's like a little bit of a boat axis, it's that corner piece.
Yeah, so it's just a sliver?
Right.
10 to 15 feet by whatever it ends up being, okay. Okay, so as far as value goes, there's no real value to the piece of property, you So as far as value goes, there's no real value to the piece of property, you can't build on it, you can't pack anything on it or anything like that, so.
Yeah, but it's, I, it's, I mean, it's not the town's to do anything with. He's pretty certain that Mr. David Horn owns it.
Okay.
And like I said, the deed says that it's reserved for public use, and they could have left it that way all these years.
Yeah, and that's just something that he wanted to do, so.
Right, so-
Public use doesn't necessarily mean the town owns it.
Right. So the question is, what can, um, you know, what can we do about keeping it clean? Because that was the concern, I think a couple of residents came in and spoke to Elise about it not being-
Sure, too.
Right.
It's easy to get on there.
She wanted to block it.
Yeah.
So.
You'd have to get ahold of David Horn, wouldn't you?
Right, to see if that's something he'd even be interested in doing.
Yep. Yeah, I guess that would be the only, only thing, yeah, I wouldn't put any more money through the attorney into it, I think we've exhausted that one, as long as we know we don't own it, so. Contact the owner and just say, here's a concern that came to us, and-
Okay, board it on to him.
Yeah, I would think, yeah. Okay. Deputy fire appointments?
Okay, so this has turned into a project. So when I pulled the Acton Fire Rescue Ordinance and found the section that we had talked about, that the, um, the members, we talked about that last week, the members of this fire rescue, um, commission need to make a recommendation to the board for these deputies.
Right.
I thought that was simple enough, so I started contacting the people to see if they were ready to be reappointed, or if they're willing to be reappointed, so I can have those ready for tonight, until I came across seven point three that says, "The fire department will maintain a nominating committee and prepare a list of qualified candidates for consideration of the commission described in section seven point one." So before I can appoint the, I mean, I, we can still appoint the commission, but they're looking to this nominating committee, so I've reached out to the fire chief, I received you guys in some emails. At his next meeting on Monday, he has to create a nominating committee. They have to keep a qualified list of candidates for consideration of all of the positions in here. Then that list, they need to turn over to the fire and rescue commission, and then they need to make, I mean-
Yeah.
Something's got to give with this ordinance, unless it's really what the intent of the people were, I mean, I'm-
I think the intent was more first round.
I'm all about what the voters want, but this is-
Yeah, there wasn't much thought put into the continuing part of-
Right. Because that, so our two deputy chiefs have no authority since June thirtieth.
Right.
And they're not going to for a couple of weeks at this rate, because we have to get a nominating committee. So we're going to go through a nominating committee, we're going to get a fire rescue committee, and it's all going to come down to them reappointing the same two people.
Right.
Because they're excellent at their jobs, and-
Yep.
So you might want to think about-
I'll-
Move, you know, if you, next time you have a town meeting, I don't know if, get some input from the public and see if they want to possibly change that.
Yeah. Yeah, something like that could be changed with just a, something as simple as, as re-upping the two that are there and, or leave them in there until something changes.
Right, I would just, you know, the, let their fire chief, I would just have it read, the fire chief will make a recommendation to the board of selectmen for appointed of, for appointment of. I mean, you essentially have the final say on appointing all people, employees, et cetera, but you would expect your fire chief to give some sort of input.
Right, and that was a bono contention when we were putting that, when we were putting that ordinance together, uh, your fire chief really should be the one that appoints his deputies.
Absolutely.
You know, he's going to work with them. And then from that point down, those three, the chief and the two assistants, appoint the captains and lieutenants. And this process is to do all that now, the, you know, the, the fact that he's my buddy doesn't apply anymore because of, you know, laws and rules and, and it's what you have to do nowadays, so. Yep.
So, I mean, we're, so we're gonna, I'm still waiting to hear back from these seven people.
Yep.
And get them together, create appointments, they're going to call some meetings.
Right.
I mean, it'll be August, I bet, before you get deputy chiefs.
It will be, so, okay. It will be. Um, I can reach out to the chief tomorrow, Elise is the, is the liaison, but-
I spoke to him a couple of times today.
Okay.
So he's got his, um, he's got a business meeting Monday, and I referred him to the-
No. He had one this past Monday.
Okay, well, let's say that I misunderstood. Uh, he has some sort of meeting on Monday, because he called me specifically to ask me if the nominating committee names could wait until Monday.
Training.
And what I see in, in the ordinance doesn't, I mean, all he's got to say is, Jen, here's my nominating list committee. I mean, it doesn't say they need to be sworn in, they need to be appointed.
Yep.
They need to make a recommendation.
Yep, okay.
So.
Very good. Goat Hill? Where do we leave off with Goat Hill?
Um, Carl Davis.
We own it.
We, we own it, yep. And apparently, um, so last, at last week's meeting, we had a conversation about, um, some questions that had come up about a possible parking lot, and what was being paved, and this access trail, so, um, I did reach out to him to see if he would come in and meet with the board, again, and I hate to keep doing this, but because the chairman is, is, um, the, really the liaison piece of that that's followed through, I did ask him to wait and come in till next week, because I wanted her to be part of that.
Yep.
It also gives people a chance out there if they have any questions for Goat Hill or, um, things they've heard to bring forward. I know that we had an IT issue with some email today, and in speaking to our IT guy, who was not even a resident of Acton, he said, "Oh, I hear you're putting a, what do you call it, a picnic or some, I mean, a, um, a parking lot at the top, and there's lessening donations." I'm like, "What?" And the selectmen don't know about that one. So, so when I talked to Carl, I'm like, "Tell me you're not fundraising for a project that my board doesn't know anything about, tell me that's not true." And he said, "It's absolutely not true." So he wants to come and clarify some things, if anybody in the public has questions about Goat Hill, and he knows the town of Acton owns this property, the voters, he knows everything has to go through you guys.
Yep.
He did ask me kind of to acknowledge that when the board agreed to, um, go forward with the grant, that you knew there was going to be a hiking trail there, and I said, "Yes, of course," but there's a difference, that, I think what we heard last year was a pay, I mean, last week was a paved hiking trail. I said, "That, that raised some concern," but, but he wants to talk to you about tree cutting and all that, so he's going to come next week.
Okay.
So if you have any questions or any rumors you've heard, Carl will be here next week.
Sounds good. New business. Steve, is it Buck?
So, um, you know, my motto is always to be nothing but honest. Um, we've had a lot of things going on, we've spent a lot of time on our fundraising efforts, we, um, got sidetracked in our hour meeting, and I have a very nice letter type for Steve Buck. Um, I just don't have it on me, it's in my office. So I'm going to tell you what it says, and, um, you guys can read it and make a decision. Uh, his meeting is Saturday, but essentially, this is the loon pond letter that nobody was able to go to, so essentially, I went through the board of selectmen minutes for the last year, and I talked about, um, what happened in the summer months, the fall months, how happy we were to see spring, I talked about the rain and the drought last year, just all of the different projects that you've done throughout the year. Probably a typo or two in there, um, but it's something that, and it's something I want to have Elise read as well, I think she'll be back in town on Wednesday, before I have to release it to him. Just a recap of, of what's gone on in Acton for the last year, since you're not able to make it, and then told him that, you know, regretfully you would try again next year, and blah, blah, blah.
Yep. Elise has to work, you have a business to run, and I'm committed over at the Watson Cemetery.
And they understand that, and I, he seemed happy with the thought of a letter.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
That's it.
Great.
Just kind of wanted something that kind of, you can tell people what's going on with it down.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea.
I might be a little biased, because I wrote it, but I feel like it sums it up pretty well.
The two are just kind of seasonal people, aren't they, so they don't really know what's going on.
And I did say in there how, you know, we're happy that they return each year, and I, I mean, you know.
Yep. Yep. Good.
Whoever has to write the town report letter, it might be a good start, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Okay. Down East Energy?
So Down East is, um, kind of reaching out, saying, you know, do you want to think about a contract? Do you are going to be going out to, back out to bid, or are you kind of happy with where you've been? So, a little background, Kim, for you, for propane, um, that the town uses and a little bit of oil, we've always had the same company, we had Eastern Propane for many years. Just from kind of small talk, and a lot of us that use propane and talk around the office, we realized how high the town was paying when they were, when they were using Eastern. Um, so about three years ago now, we went out to bid, and we contacted all of the companies, and, um, Down East has given us a phenomenal rate. They're giving us rates between a dollar forty-nine and a dollar ninety-nine for the amount of propane that we use. Um, the last couple of years, the board hasn't felt like they've had any reason to go back out to bid, you don't have to with this, it's, it's your choice. So they're just kind of reaching out, saying, you know, would you be willing to look at another contract? When asked if it was going up, they said they'd be able to stay right within the same range, so we can ask them to draft something and look at it next week. Or if you feel like the price is really going down, uh, we can go back out to bid.
I think, let's see, we haven't been out to bid for, what, two years?
This will be our third year with Down East if we stay with them.
Yeah. I don't know, I think about every three years, you probably ought to go out to bid.
So this would be our third year, so we go out to bid next year, or you want?
I'd like to go out to bid this year.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we got a new oil company, Fersay, in town, well, kind of in town. Emery Mills was bought out by Eastern.
Yes.
Yeah. Maybe they'll be better, maybe not, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely, it doesn't hurt, it's a fairly quick process, we just have to tell them how many gallons that we use, and-
Yeah, and we, and we got that information, so.
Yep.
Um, yeah, get it out to as many as you can think of that would be interested.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
So if we have those out, today's Tuesday, by the end of the week, I mean, two weeks should be a good enough turnaround time?
I would think so, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um, another one, I haven't, they're close to this area, Rhymes, Rhymes, uh, propane oil.
I usually-
Is there a name for it?
I don't-
Well, we, I, I generally have somebody in the office find at least ten companies, and we just address envelopes and send it out. I mean, at the same time, it's going to be in the Smart Shop, or it's going to be in that, you know, we hit all of the other places, just like if we were doing plowing or sand or salt, um, so. We'll sporadically pick ten of the closest and advertise it as well.
I mean, I don't, I don't deal with Rhymes, I'm just, this is another company that came to mind.
Okay. I've never heard of them, so I appreciate the name.
Yep, I know they got a service tech, only because he's, lives in Milton Mills, I see his truck packed, so.
Okay.
Anyway.
I have a couple of little things I forgot.
Sure, go ahead.
So, um, I do have it advertised for, um, planning board, we have an opening spot.
Yep.
We have a road committee spot open, and, um, I know I mentioned it in our off-hours, but just to, our animal control officer that we appointed last Tuesday has, um, decided to no longer take the position. So, we, so, and I'm just, I'm just going to say, my poor husband, I know we don't bring, we don't bring work and home together, but, so he's been trying to resign since May. Uh, we're not having a whole lot of luck filling the position. Um, we had somebody for July, we prorated July's pay, so that the current ACO would get a, you know, the first ten days were the pay, and the one that we appointed would get twenty days were the pay. Mike was very happy, he brought me all of his stuff that, that he was going to turn over, and, uh, so when the gentleman decided he was no longer interested, um, the very next day, I can't remember what day it was, but it was about eleven o'clock at night, there's a dog on, um, what road was that? One of the Berg Roads down there by Belinda, Peacock.
Peacock.
It was, they found a dog, so. Good news is, we only got halfway to Kennybunk, and then we found the owner, so. So he is still on it by, um-
Individual that we paid?
We didn't pay him.
We didn't pay him, okay, great.
We held the check, I wasn't going to pay him until the twenty days were over.
Okay.
Um, but I have so far already gotten two more resumes. I'm going to be honest with you, I mean, I've been communicating with one of them, um, there were some people that are willing to do it, but this, you know, without naming names, one of the individuals works three twelve-hour days, and I said, "So what's going to happen if you get a call? If a call comes in?" And he's like, "Well, I'm not going to be able to do it, but I can do the other five days."
Right.
Or seven, you know, four days. If it gets to a point, I mean, we're going to have to, it's not a lot of us stipend, well, I mean, it's three hundred dollars, three fifty a month to be on call twenty-four seven. And when I say twenty-four seven, that means the calls come in all hours of the night.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep, it's no different than a volunteer fireman.
We need somebody that's retired, or that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You just never know when these calls are going to come in, so.
I wonder if we'd be better off to set it up, have a couple, two or three people, and set it up on a per-call basis, as opposed to-
The only-
On a month basis. I mean, you could very easily go over budget on it.
Right.
But you'd have to put a cap on it.
All right, and the only, only concern that I have with that, um, that I can think of is that dispatch is not going to be happy with that idea. Because dispatch, you know, like, when they called, um, they called here a week or so ago, saying, you know, "We don't have an ACO on file," and we need, and so I gave them my cell phone number and said, you know, "Any calls in the meantime?" But they want one contact, so, I mean, if we decide to do it that way, we're going to have to talk, because if I'm the contact, and then I have to stop and find somebody, you know, I mean, because they're not going to keep all three names on.
Right. Or you have one key person, and that one key person-
Well, lucky they keep the one, yeah, no.
Yeah, I don't know.
So.
What do other towns do? This can't be an Acton-only problem.
I told you, I, I told you, they just-
Yeah. I mean, it's not a full-time position by any stretch of imagination.
It's not a full-time position, I mean, we have Frank and Shapley, he's, he is retired, he's an older gentleman, um, he takes the calls when he can, I mean, it's that simple. If he can't get to the call, then he just, I don't want to say ignore, because that's the wrong word.
No.
The situation just works itself out, but the, that just-
And a lot of them will, but-
But that's not an option here, because they go above and beyond, do you know what I mean, and-
Yep.
So.
Yep.
I also sent an email to the Newfield and the Lebanon clerks to see if they might have, um, a name, somebody that might want to, you know, if you already have somebody that's retired, maybe they'll want to join and take two towns.
Yep. Yep, yeah, yeah, like, like, uh-
Frank did.
Frank did, he did Shapley and Acton, so.
I tried selling it back to him, but-
Yeah, I know, I was here when you tried that, but you were a good salesperson on it, but he didn't bite, so.
He didn't bite.
Okay. Anything else on your list there?
No, sir.
Okay. Like I said earlier, I got the Watson Cemetery, uh, gravestone this Saturday, that's at eleven o'clock. So I'm going to go to that. Go right ahead, public comment.
Susan Mann, "I saw the website, thank you, that was wonderful. And then I searched and searched for your office hours."
For the town hall's office hours?
No, for the selectmen.
Oh, well, they, they don't have office hours.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't?
Oh, that's why I couldn't find them.
We have this, and we have the first three, the first three Thursday nights.
So what you saw under their little bio that they meet on, that's when they're here?
Yep.
Oh, all right.
Yep.
Okay, I thought they had actual office.
The prior board, before the election, um, had Thursdays where they alternated the first three, and this board decided that they would re-talk about it in the fall?
But we were taking, I think we were just taking July off.
July and August, okay.
I don't know about August.
So we'll put that back on the agenda, so that'll get added to that page if they decide.
Because that did work out pretty well, you know, with people, if they know we're going to be here for-
Yeah.
And it's not all of us, it's, it's one of us, that way anybody can come in and talk and-
That's what I thought it was, so I guess I'm working off of the old board rules.
Yeah, they have, they haven't committed to it, so I didn't advertise it.
Oh, all right, so here I was, I was trying to embarrass you, but I embarrassed myself, that's okay.
No, you didn't, not at all. Not at all.
But then, as I started looking through the website, I really wanted to know about the planning board. And so I opened it up, and it was a blank page, I don't know who's on the planning board.
That's right.
So how do we get those people to do what you did?
So what I did, so the, um-
Yes.
Okay.
So I had our IT, our IT guy, um, create it so that it wasn't just the minutes, so we had that blank page when you started it. Um, I did contact and speak to the code enforcement officer, planning board secretary. The agreement that we came to is that as soon as this planning board seat was filled, we would take a picture and do the exact same thing. They didn't feel like it was, we should spend the time, being such a small town and small staff, to put it all up there and then add a new member and need a new photo. They didn't feel like it was, we should spend the time, being such a small town and small staff, to put it all up there and then add a new member and need a new photo. So it's set up. You see that blank page that you never saw before because it's ready to go. Minutes are still there, so they'll show up on the side, just like the boards, but until they fill the position, we didn't want to take the photo more than once.
Right, and the example I was going to give is the CEO page.
Yes.
Because they have all of the hours and, you know, he has links to things that people would be concerned about. So, I mean, their page looks great. So, you know.
And a lot of, like, for the town clerk's links, a lot of our links, my links are on the homepage because they're easier, I think. You know, register your car online, register your boat online, so they're not having to go to that department. So there's not a lot of links on my individual page, but I have them on the homepage under useful links, because when people call and say, "How do I register my car online?", it's easier to say, "Go to actonmain.org." You'll see useful links, and we just go through the list rather than put them on a page.
Right.
Code enforcement has so many forms, though, that we shifted him over.
Right, I was just using that as an example of what they, but, but their page is completely full. So, so are you the only admin to get into the website?
Nope. Everybody can maintain their own departments and their own pages, but they only have access to that. So the planning board, Brenda has access to her pages, the library has access to their pages, the board of selectmen. Everybody has different authorities. When you go in and create a user, you can say what they can and can't have access to.
So they can, like, drop in information, photographs, whatever, almost whatever.
Well, I mean, there, you figure we've got-
I realize this is-
Yeah, no, no, you figure we probably only have four users in the whole building, so we have, you know, me, me and Michelle and Brenda, and then the library has it. Nobody else updates the website, I mean, we don't have anybody left.
Right.
So, I mean, Michelle and I have access to everything, so if something happens to one of the two of us, the other person can always jump in, but it's my job to maintain the website as far as the homepage and the boards. Brenda handles her piece of it. The school and all of those others, I don't know if you noticed, on the left, I made those direct links, so you no longer have to go click here. It just takes you right there. So the school and the fire department, they all maintain their own.
Okay.
So, but they don't use our site to get to them because they're another hyperlink.
Okay. So you're one of the admin, that's all I need to know.
Yes.
Yeah. So you would be the person that I would talk to if I had, like, some really great ideas, even for an old website? Like, this is an old-
It is an old website, and we, and we've had, I've had conversations with, with Teto and with, with the board. I mean, we've, you know, got a little bit of money if they want to take it a step up, but to take it to a step to where we need to be, it's going to have to wait until next year's budget season.
But there's still things you can do with what you have and, you know, maybe someday we'll chat about it.
Sure.
The other thing I wanted to talk about was the gentleman that was here earlier and he, you know, and I don't blame him for being upset about the conditions of the road and everything. I totally understand that. But then I started thinking, I remember I, on, often on, what's that day?
Like Earth Day?
Earth Day. My husband and I will walk up and down our road and we get all the trash and everything, and he puts it in his truck and goes off to the dump and so forth. And so I have a friend who lives up in Milton Mills Road, and she had gotten a whole bunch of people together to help clean the Milton Mills Road. So no problem with getting volunteers, but she needed a truck. And she had asked the road commissioners and they were denied. So then it started, it got me thinking, if we had a committee, like a Make Acton Beautiful, whatever you want to call it, committee, of really volunteers that would clean the roads a couple of times a year, but would have the blessing and the might of the selectmen, so that maybe they could get some trucks to help pick up all the trash and bring it to, is that, am I crazy?
Not at all.
No, no.
No.
Because I think sometimes the codes are wonderful, but a mindset is better. I don't know if I'm being clear, but I think if we had like a Make Acton Beautiful committee and they would, on Earth Day and maybe some other time, clean, clean all the, all the roads in town. Maybe make it a competition, whatever they want to do, but it would be nice if we could get the road commissioner's trucks and they would bring the trash to the dump. That's a thought. And that's, you don't have to make a decision right now. Think about it, though.
I think that, you know, Earth Day, a lot of people do that. When I, I was trying to think of the flip, flip side of every situation, not just this one, but, is that I don't want to encourage people either that, "Well, somebody will pick it up," you know what I mean? I worry about them thinking that that, you know what I mean, that somebody will do that. I mean, I would, I would hope that they, they would help out. We also-
I'll tell you.
Also have the transfer station employees that might be more in their job description to, you know, do some assisting.
I, I just know that it was a problem for them to get a truck and, and I thought, well, jeez, if they had the blessing and the might of the selectmen, maybe they would have better luck.
Yeah.
Well, they must have been just busy. I mean, I can't imagine they just turned down.
It's on a Saturday and, you know, who knows?
You know, if you've got something like that, that you're definitely going to do and it's ahead of time, plenty of people would donate their trucks, too. Even, do you know what I'm saying?
Right.
You know, and I'm sure each one of them would, too, if, if they knew, you know, what it was for, like I said, ahead of time or-
Yeah, I mean, that'd be the easiest way to do it, have, have a pickup time. Set it up so you've got a, you've got a, you've got a pickup time during the day when you're going to go out and everybody's going to gather and, you know, say by two o'clock in the afternoon, okay, the truck's coming by to pick up the bags.
Well, I remember I grew up when people would leave trash everywhere.
Yeah.
It was awful.
Yeah.
And, and we have since changed people's mindsets, but I remember when I was in high school, we used to have, I don't even know what they call it, trash days, and we would make it a competition. You wouldn't believe how much trash we would get. So I think, I don't know, maybe that might help that gentleman that is frustrated.
The one on Milton Mills Road you were talking about, I think, I forget how many bags they said they got. She had bags donated to go out and do the whole thing.
Right.
Did a great job, so.
No, we could, I mean, we could put a community effort together.
Yeah.
Easily.
Because I think that you may have more success with that. I mean, I feel like I know a majority of the Acton pretty well and how they feel on certain things. And I am, I, I really feel like if you, if you try to put an ordinance before them that's, that's too demanding of property maintenance, they're going to vote it down because you, there's still that group of people with the mindset that it's their property and, and, you know, "Well, I'll pick on my own husband." I mean, if he lived in Acton, that would be his mindset. "This is my property, blah, blah, blah." You know what I mean? And I'm going to do what, what I want. I mean, that's just, you know what I mean? And there is going, and I'm not saying that we're, we're slobs or junkyards, but, you know, some people are going to think like that, and if you put forward an ordinance that's too strict, they will vote it down. So that might be another good approach to try to, you know,
Right.
help clean up some of that and, but at the same time, I mean, I get his frustration if he's been talking about a property that long.
I mean, with that-
And we could probably squeeze some deputy hours to try to get that situation cleaned up anyways.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. You know, the cleanup day, you're going to get the sides of the roads. You're not going to get people's front lines.
Right.
No, but it might make that person realize, wow, everybody, look at all these people there donating their time and efforts. You know, it's a slow process, but I think eventually-
I feel like that we did a Make Acton Beautiful thing back when my kids were younger.
Wow.
Oh, see, it's going to go back.
All the kids at school, I mean, we picked lots of trash on the-
Well, we got, yeah, I, I like to- Kids were, though, I mean, liability is an issue. We have to set up volunteers and insurance ahead of time. I don't want the kid idea, though. We don't want the town to be liable.
It's a good thought and something to think about and, you know, work on.
Earth Day is in April, so you could set something for the fall.
Plenty of time.
Well, either that or maybe even, like, after Acton Fair, you know, let's find something, or in September, might be a good time to start planning and really pushing it.
Earth Day doesn't really work up here. It's, what, April?
There's a lot of towns we still have snow.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can't even see the shoulders of the road yet for the snowbankings.
Right. Early fall where it's not too, um-
You know, you could do a May Day.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, something, you know.
Yeah, May, September or something like that.
And after summer, you're going to have all that trash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody, you know, seriously, you know, which is too bad, but they do throw it out.
Anyway, and that, and that might, you know, make a lot of people happy if they could.
Good.
So.
Keep coming up with these ideas. We're going to get you on a committee sometime. Thank you.
Got it.
No, it is a great idea, so, especially if you get people to take their, their own road, for instance.
Right.
You know, people live on a certain road, just, you know, yeah. Yep. Okay.
Wow.
It's coming down now.
It's really raining out, yeah.
I'm going to be at work for a little while. Look at that rain.
Any other public comment? Anyone else in the public? No? Okay, do you have anything else?
I don't.
No? Anything else, Jen?